Six o'clock will call the meeting to order. We'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Donnie Meyer, will you leave us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, will you leave us in the roll call in the termination of forum?
Sure.
Thanks.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Jerry Burmester.
Here.
Ryan Williams.
Here.
Corey Hall.
Here.
Marissa Gag.
Here.
All present.
We're all here. In the Google Drive, we have the minutes from our last meeting, which would have been the August eighth meeting. The only correction that I have for these is under new business. Rob Holloway, it references on the planning commission, that's actually Drew Holloway. So unless there are any other questions, comments, concerns, I'll entertain a motion for approval of those with that edit.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the August eighth minutes with the one edit. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Okay, now I will call Chief Nodine from the South Madison Fire Territory to come up and start off a little bit of a special part of our meeting tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Like Marissa said, that usually sometimes that we have incidents that where we're never thanked enough. And tonight is one of those special occasions, and then I like to call up Curtis McKissick from IU Health, who is the EMS liaison between the IU Health Central Indiana Region and all the EMS agencies that are throughout Central Indiana, with a special presentation for some of our members who we have here in the audience.
Well, he took some of my introduction away. So first of all, thank you for having us again. My name is Curtis McKissick. I'm the EMS liaison for IU Health. I cover the Indianapolis suburban region. It's pretty much outside of Marion County. So longtime resident of the town and fire department. So super excited to be here to celebrate our department and our town for a really cool thing. With me tonight, I have Natalie Zipper. She's the ED Director at IU Health Saxony. On an early evening in April, crews from South Madison Fire Territory were notified of an individual down in the park. Off-duty and retired personnel who were in the area quickly realized the emergency was close and quickly responded, located the victim, and at that time, they noticed the patient was pulseless and was not breathing. CPR was initiated, quickly followed by shock from an AED, provided by the town and the crew, the Parks Department. The crew of South Madison arrived shortly after that, continued care by doing such things as administering medications, providing advanced airways, continuing that care that was already initiated. During that short time while they were on scene, in the quick action of bystanders, CPR, AED shock, patient actually regained pulses within fifteen minutes of that 911 call. Pretty great story, pretty great numbers. Patient was then transported to IU Health Saxony, where the staff took over care from the South Madison crews with no hiccup. With the ideology of this event being unknown, unknowing what the patient initially started this cardiac arrest event, this patient was consulted with IU Health Methodist, with the physicians down there, and was ultimately transported down to IU Health Methodist Downtown for their ICU stay. This patient remained in the ICU for about a month and was released in sound mind and health. And as a former member of the department, like I said, longtime resident, none of the story really shocks me. The care and the always the response that we have from a town and a department has always been top notch and nothing expects different today. So from the team and leadership at IU Health Saxony, we congratulate the crews, current and retired, for a job well done and a life saved. And we're going to present them with our IU Health Distinguished Service Award and provide them also with a challenge coin they can carry with small times to understand and remember this cool event. So at this time, I'll have my assistant come up and help me out here, hand out names. These are not in any particular order. So Ryan Ryland Hollinsworth. Mark McClure. There you are. Sure. And then I've got. Laura Meyer. Jeff Coons. Donnie Meyer. Taylor Chitwell. Jeremy Linegar. But with this in mind, Jared Mossen. Scott Riss. See, you were shocked. You think I was gonna let you out?
It took me halfway through your speech to realize. Cause you said the park.
The patient didn't sign, that's in the parks, right? So due to not a lot of information sent out because we don't have patient consent and all that stuff, so had to be very vague. But I'm glad you caught on, and we greatly appreciate you guys. As usual, our partnership has really exceeded over the last few years. We really don't expect anything different from the future. So thank you again, Natalie.
Just on behalf of Dr. Noah, he's our medical director and myself, we just want to say thank you for trusting us with the care of your family's friends. So we appreciate the partnership. And we couldn't do without.
Can you get one photo real fast? Can you get us all?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, team.
And just, just a little update. The patient that they were speaking of actually came into the fire station about two, three weeks ago. Him and his wife and sat down at the station and talked to us for probably forty-five minutes, and he is absolutely doing remarkable. No long-term ill effects or anything, so it's a cool story, so. He remembers nothing. He remembers sitting in the chair and waking up in the ICU. That's it.
Awesome.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
Absolutely. Thank you for all that you do, not just on this incident, but all the incidents in our greater South Madison area. You're very much appreciated.
Be safe, guys. See y'all. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, sir. Now back to the not-so-exciting stuff. Everybody left. We have our July clerk treasures report. Anything you'd like to add to that, Willie?
No, we've got June, May, June and July vouchers that we look at, all the expenses. July, we spent quite a bit of money, but we're still good in general fund. We've got one million nine hundred forty-four thousand, some odd change in there, so. That's about all I have. Everything else is in the drive.
Any questions for Willie regarding the claims that he referenced? If we don't have any questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
A motion for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the clerk treasure report including the claims. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Moving on to department reports, we will start with the police chief, Mark Fard.
Good evening. Evening. Police department report, school security. I had a meeting with Mr. Hall, how we can get some better security at the school, and it always goes back to money. So we were able to have a discussion, and he was able to come up with money. And officers working off duty are now working at the school a little bit more than what they were because they upped the hourly wage. But more than not, we've had all the schools covered. So it's been a great thing. The benefit of that also is, is the agreement with the school, it's if something were to jump off locally that I needed that kind of manpower, they're here. So it's a win-win. Mr. Hall's always been great to work with, and the school board approved it, so kudos to them for recognizing the need as well. So it's great. Ballistic shield training. So I don't know if you follow school active terror or active shooters like I do, but Uvalde School had an issue with not having shields when they responded to that particular incident. For years, I've always said that I understand our job is to go into the school on those situations, but we need equipped to do that. So one thing I've done over the years is I've spent money for ballistic shields, upgraded ballistic vests. Council's been very receptive of those funds. But I now have two officers that are trained in the use of the shields, and they shared that knowledge with the department. So we had shield training the other day, and then we followed that up with active shooting on the gun range with the shields. We don't have time anymore in the world we live in to wait on SWAT. So we are the SWAT. We have the same equipment as SWAT does. SWAT, all it means is special weapons and tactics. And back in the day, you couldn't afford rifles for everybody on a department, so ten people got it and they got called special. Well, now, everybody has those special weapons. Now, there are times where SWAT comes in with even better stuff, but as far as Pendleton PD, we've kept the equipment upgraded, and that's been a positive. So we've had that training, and then we actually put it to use out on the range the other day. Public Safety Day was great. Again, K Burgers were awesome, and the weather was nice, and we appreciate the invite to that every year. Property Room, Officer Scott Bertram and Officer Matt Eby are my property room managers. Anybody in the profession of law enforcement and the justice system knows that the sanctity of the property room is huge when it comes to evidence of a crime. And they went to a special school, came back with some more knowledge, and have been putting that into practice and tightening up the property room even more. So we've never had an issue with our property room, but the guys are, they're excited to do it, and they're implementing a lot of new stuff, so it's a good thing. One thousand three hundred and one total dispatch calls for the month, seventeen crash investigations, sixty-six criminal arrests, adult criminal, two juvenile, and then ninety-four code warnings, fifty-four citations written. But again, sixty-six criminal arrests. And I know today, this is kind of an interesting call. We get calls of suspicious people all the time. But out in Carrick Glen, we got a call suspicious truck driving around the area. Well, what they were doing is they were dumpster diving at the construction sites, but they also had meth. So Officer Coroga was able to make a pretty good arrest on that. And normally, I would save this for next month's report, but we just got the e-bikes that we ordered that was approved by the town. And Captain Trailer responded to the meth call on the e-bike, so he got to claim the first e-bike arrest. Yeah, some bragging rights. They transported. So but we're excited to get those out. You'll start seeing those in the community. We're gonna get them stickered with Pendleton on them. But they're, they're an awesome asset for the town as well, and you'll see those here in the future. And that's my report. If someone has something else.
Any questions for Chief? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Aaron from the park is not here. He submitted a report to us via email today. Moral of the story, everything's looking good in the park. We're in the final throes of summer, but things are going well. So with that, we will add Chris Nodine and the Fire Territory onto the agenda.
And once again, good evening. Just real quick, like Chief Fard said, our Public Safety Day was a huge success that we had over there. We collected between the folks sitting at the corner of State Street and Pendleton Avenue, as well as the donations from Garrett's famous lemonade, and we raised over twenty-seven hundred dollars. Half of that going to Garrett's Charity of Choice, which is curing kids' cancer, and then the other half going to the Hoosier Burn Camp. This coming, well, first Saturday in October, I think it's the fifth, whatever, Garrett is actually presenting that check to curing kids' cancer at the Meacom Auction. So if you guys are watching online to Meacom Auction, wanting to buy a car, you'll see Garrett present the check. And he usually goes up there and auctions off something, and they usually end up raising upwards of about ten thousand dollars based off of that twenty-seven hundred you know, thirteen hundred dollar check that, that we gave to him for that. So it's, it's gonna be a cool event for Garrett. He enjoys coming down here and doing it, and his mom and dad love it. His mom, her dad was C.R. Brown from the Emergency Management from years ago, so strong tide at the public safety community. Kind of an update also, so far for the year, we're approaching two thousand runs. We're at eighteen sixty-seven today, so we're on another record, record pace year to break that mark, which is absolutely unbelievable, you know, just going by years past. You know, you look at all the run data and stuff that comes in, it's like, you know, we never thought we were gonna break a thousand runs, and now we're upwards of two thousand and going, and going strong, so. We were, as stated previously, we were awarded a grant for a fire truck. At the end of the year, that truck has now since been delivered to Hoosier Fire in Mount Comfort. It's getting all the ancillary stuff put on it, so hopefully we should have that truck here shortly. The ambulance that's being remounted is over in Pennsylvania. We just received some pictures of where the chassis been mounted under the box, so hopefully that'll be here within the next couple of weeks. So once we get those in, we'll have a big ceremony. It's called a wet down push-in ceremony. It's from years past, stuff to where we take the retiring engine out, we spray it down, wash it down, and we push the truck in. That's what they did with the horses way back when, so looking forward to that. If you guys weren't aware, just this past couple of weeks, we were awarded a safer grant, which is a staffing for firefighters. Excuse me, for the fire department. We were one of two safer awards that the company that we use as Ohio First Responders Grants, that was awarded. We were awarded over two million dollars. That will allow us to provide six firefighters for federal funding for up to three years. And then after the three years, they will be under our budget going forward. So that eased the purse string a little bit as far as we're going. It's changing every day. I'm not for sure what day of the week it is sometimes because of all the changes and stuff going on at the fire department. But right now, things are looking real good for as the fire department goes. We're still on, on track to try to find some architectural work to eventually build us a new fire station. We preliminary got some ground, but we'll know more about that probably Q2 of next year, whether that station's gonna go and put that in concrete and stone. So we're working on that to provide Ingles station a little bit better of housing amenities and stuff for, for a new station being built somewhere out south and west of town. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Chris?
Awesome. I appreciate all you guys' support, and be looking for an invitation on the wet down here coming soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Planning Department, Hannah Rose Bransky's not here tonight, so we've got Denise. Are you gonna go over the report?
Yeah, good evening. Yes, so in closing your Google Drive, you have the Planning Department Report that's provided by our Planning Director Hannah Rose. Some key highlights from this past month, the month of August here. HPC is just wrapping up their final design guidelines to include an entire inventory of all of our historic buildings here in Pendleton. Also, Building Inspector Brett Mayberry, he is working with the South Madison Fire Protection Territory. They are working to create a building classification report, and the purpose of that is to, and it's going to focus on just commercial buildings, but it'll make sure that those structures, their safety measures, their building code and so forth are in line with what intended use is for that space or those rooms. So we're very excited about getting that up and going. It's going to be huge moving forward. I think he's working with Jim Stewart, and it's going to be a great collaborative project between the two. Also, our site development plan review process, you'll see Blue Star Concrete Plant just west of town near State Road Thirteen and Seven Hundred South. They are working on right-of-way acquisition and so forth for an improved Seven Hundred South there. And Express Car Wash there by Needlers and Community Health Network constructions are going really nicely, and it's great to be able to see those structures being erected. Residential subdivision developments are steady developing. Baker's Point just had their secondary plat approved. We did the pre-construction meeting the end of August, I think it was on the twenty-eighth. And from there, we expect earthmoving and utility work here in the next thirty to sixty days. So you'll start seeing a lot of movement there west of town. Also, the Falls subdivision, that's an older subdivision. It was developed between, starting in two thousand and eight until about a year ago. And once that subdivision was fully built out, there was identification of some issues with the roadway and some other infrastructures within that subdivision. We are very pleased to say the residents are very happy with the improvements that Coronado has made over the last six months. We just did a walkthrough, and they have been issued a punch list item as far as the final items. We have a few drainage issues, side repairs and landscaping that they're gonna be focusing on this fall. So as soon as all those are checked off, then we'll be accepting those roadways and those public right-of-ways within the Falls subdivision. Transportation project updates, we have US thirty-six. We've been working with the school. We're right-of-way there along sixty-seven and State Road Thirty-eight. We have the Business Park Trail. We've been working really intently with our consultant on design for that. They just did some survey work on Main Street and Taylor, just to be able to determine, you know, what red flags or hiccups might be in those more tightly corridors, those areas, and to, to identify if that is the appropriate route for that trail system. Paving project, we're looking at wrapping that up pretty soon. We're going to be doing a final walkthrough this coming Friday morning with staff and consultants and the contractors. So we anticipate probably the next sixty days that project, which is a community crossings project, will be wrapped up. And then we're also have the McCarty Drain, our final phase of that, Phase Three. We're hoping to be able to go under bid here in the next thirty days and get a contractor assigned for that project. Then last, Kerry Craig, he's our community coordinator developer. He has been working really hard with Main Street and Chamber of Commerce here this past year and a half or so. They just had a very successful Fall Festival. That was actually in September, but some highlights in August include they were just awarded three thousand dollars for Pendleton Citizen Academy, a very unique program. I just learned about this program. It's an educational program that allows us to interact with the public and be able to educate them on local government processes. Then they also are working with the South Madison Community Foundation on a Historic Preservation Fund Grant for the Thomas Pendleton Grant or Thomas Pendleton House for a potential grant here in the next six months to a year. And then also, place making committee is working with the Pendleton Art Society on the mural project. Those are the highlights of the Planning Department. If you have any questions?
Anything? Questions for Denise?
I just want to say that the festival this year was fantastic.
It was phenomenal, wasn't it?
Thank you to all of our townspeople that was involved and worked on that.
Yeah, yes, we just had kind of a post-event debrief this afternoon. I think that went really well and talked about some things that we can tweak to improve that for next year. But yes, we agree. We couldn't agree anymore. Fall Festival, Heritage Fair, and all the other events that, you know, are along with that on that weekend. It was a phenomenal, fantastic weekend for our community.
As a downtown business owner, I think Steve would agree with this. I mean, it's great to bring people to town. They come in your stores and spend money.
Yeah. Yeah.
As a business owner.
Yeah.
Good weekend.
Yeah, it really was. Oh, yes.
Anything else for Denise? Thanks, Denise.
Yeah.
Turn it over to Scott, Town Manager's Report.
I'll just, I'll just start out with what Denise was talking about. It was what we were talking about, the Fall Festival, the Heritage Fair. Really done well. Just, it's just getting bigger, and we shuffled a little bit about where it, where the vendors would be this year, and I think that turned out successful, and everybody at the town really did work hard. Just to give you a perspective, two hundred and fifty vendors. I mean, there's probably the first of them, probably only had two hundred and fifty people show up, let alone, now we got two hundred and fifty vendors. Couple of things you might not notice around town, maybe you did. We went back through, and while the thermoplastic street painters were in town doing the, putting the new striping down for the paving, we had them spruce up some certain key crossings right here. We enhanced that, the brick crossing a little bit, some of the school crossings. And we're gonna continue to be aggressive about that and talking about some additional strobe light type crossings that we're gonna put in place for push-button in the park and near some of the school crossings. I think I talked about it last month, but with the chief here, the street department is gonna modify the street there in front of the last two bays so they can get the aerial out. They have to pull it out, back it up a little bit, make the turn, and then putting it back, same problem. So they've been working on that. Have we started flipping dirt yet?
They were out there.
Yeah, I know they've been working on it, but I don't think they've started digging yet. We put additional speed limit signs up on, in the park, because people aren't getting the message. You count the number of signs, we're not quite at a dozen on that part between the community building to the sports complex, but we've got more than six, less than a dozen, somewhere in there. Angle Road sidewalk is complete, if you haven't noticed that. It's some of the best concrete work that we've had done in the town. They really showed a lot of craftsmanship out there. And then Aaron Oster will be taking over Cemetery Sexton. As you know, we took Aaron going. He moved to part-time, wanted to retire. He came back. We begged him to come back for one more six-month stint. Asked him for more, and he said, no, I'm done. I'm ready to retire. He's been the longest-term employee at twenty-six year, twenty-eight? What do we say today?
Twenty-eight, I think.
Twenty-eight. Looks like we'll probably have lunch for him. I'd like to see all of you there. Probably on the, his last day, which will be October first. That's, so that's tentative, not firm yet. And then the other thing, I think, you've probably heard a lot of feedback that people didn't want us to pave the cemetery, so we awarded that contract, and Denise did a lot of work on that. And we'll use money from the GO bond. Got money sitting in the GO bond that we needed.
You are going to pay that?
We are gonna pay, but just the existing roads, right? We'll be basically just putting on, we'll do some repairs in the existing so it can, in places so it can hold up this, the new layer, inch and a half, right? Inch and a half added to the top of that. That's just the location if you can't understand what I was talking about. Maybe confusing, but basically here in front of the fire station, this is the yellow house, this is the parking lot, the fire station parking lot. So basically, from the fence back, this whole little green space will come away, and the sidewalk will be re-floored. And basically, it kind of a curve. Makes sense? So you'll see some more. We're gonna redo the apron too.
Any questions for Scott? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any old business this evening, so we'll go straight into new business. Ordinance twenty-four twenty-eight, the budget for twenty twenty-five. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. So this budget basically covers our administration budget, the planning department, the police department, fire, MVH, and I think that's everything. Did I rattle those off? I think Karen, anything I got them on? All right. This covers those as they pertain to the levy, the property tax levy. You can see the summary there on the screen. All of the details of this are online as well as in your Google Drive. Is there any comments from the public? I don't think so, did I? Any, any comments or questions, concerns from council? Okay, now do I close the public hearing and then vote?
Yes, we do.
Okay, at this point, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a vote or a motion for approval.
That motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of ordinance twenty-four twenty-eight, the budget for twenty twenty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Is there anything else we have to do with that to satisfy? Okay, we're great. Moving on to ordinance twenty-four twenty-nine, the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-five. It has been a goal of mine that we approve, or at least present the salary ordinance in tandem with the budget for the year. And so we are doing that tonight with the first round of presentation on the salary ordinance. The basic idea behind this is this is a five percent increase off of last year. We have also increased the longevity bonus to twenty-five year, to cap out at twenty-five years versus twenty years. And this also sets the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-five. Those are kind of the highlights of this. Any questions or comments? Nothing? Okay, if there aren't any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
The motion, second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-four twenty-nine, the first read of the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We will stop with just the first read on that and we will do second read at our next meeting on October tenth, when we do the second read of the budget. Moving on to twenty-four seventeen, hotels and places of public lodging. This has changed a little bit from how it was presented last month. And so we are kind of starting over, as far as the progress of this. But Denise can tell us a little more about it.
Yeah, absolutely. So enclosed in your Google Drive, you'll find the latest version of the Hotel and Places of Public Lodging ordinance. Like Town Council President Marissa Skaggs had said, that this ordinance was presented for the first time at the August Town Council meeting. And at that time, there was a decision to go ahead and continue to this month to allow time for staff to review this, officials to review further, to see if there was any need for any other changes or additions to that ordinance. Basically, you know, the way that this ordinance works, it provides the means for the town of Pendleton through an annual registration process to require hotel owners and operators to then apply for a hotel license in order to operate a local hotel within our jurisdiction. They have to apply for this each year. This regulation process will allow us to regulate it, have oversight, to be able to help preserve public welfare, safety, and the well-being for our community. This ordinance outlines the application process. It also goes into the application fee, the renewal procedures, as well as review criteria and grounds for denial, as well as appeal processes at the end of that ordinance. So the ordinance before you tonight is exactly the same that was presented last month, except for there's one element that was added. And what element was added from the feedback that we got was that sometimes there may be a need for grounds or criteria for denying or not accepting an application. But that would be for delinquency for ends keeper and tax property delinquencies. And so that has been added, we're proposing to add that into the ordinance. Other than that addition, we never, we had not received any other additional comments or requests for additions or modifications to that. Should you decide to move forward and approve that tonight, it will require two reads though, because of that significant addition that had been made. So that being said, if you have any questions about the ordinance, I'd be more than happy to help answer your questions.
I have good questions.
Oh wait, we've got a comment.
And you may have said it.
Yes.
Does this include Airbnbs?
No, it does not.
Real punch.
Yeah, yes, we do, we do have a registration process for Airbnbs. So that is a separate kind of program, but it is not, this is just strictly to hotel. And more, I guess, places of lodging, but not independently owned.
Any other questions? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-four seventeen, hotels and places of public lodging. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We can probably delay second read until the October meeting. Okay. Okay, of course. Moving on to ordinance twenty-four twenty-four, schedule of fees for duplication of public records and other services. We spend a significant amount of time, or our staff spends a significant amount of time fulfilling the public records requests through lawyer requests and things of that nature. And so this is simply just a fee schedule pertaining to the media that we use. You'll see a lot of references, I mean, even cassette tapes are listed here, the police department, or if we have them over here. We'll get on an eight-track later and figure that out. But that is what this does, just let us kind of recoup a little bit of the money that we spend and the time that we spend on doing that. And Jeff, I believe this is, we are statutorily allowed to, to charge this fee, correct?
That, that, correct, this follows the maximum that is permissible under Indiana law to recoup. This does not, it's calculated not to be a, submit an obstacle to people that want public records. But it's just a little bit, just for physical, actual cost, allows us to recoup that. And with regard to like, request for ordinances or electronic sentiment even, that doesn't cost any. Right, so that hasn't changed, it's just mainly for the voluminous request. It seems like the police department gets quite a bit, or our planning staff gets quite a bit, allows us on the media to get some of that back.
Yeah, I mean, the copying of the documents is ten cents for black and white, or twenty-five for color. So I mean, this is set pretty nominally, that just allows us to recoup a little bit of that.
And we have had public record requests in the last three years that were thousands of pages.
Right.
So it can help us get a little bit of that back.
Any questions or comments regarding this fee schedule?
You said the fee schedule, this is the maximum that's allowed? Just for an example, I'm going to do the police department. If somebody requests a body cam video, and then the police department, whoever does that, I'm assuming, okay, straight up, the time it takes to blackout people's faces or addresses, and does that take into account how much time he has to use to do all that?
We're not allowed to charge for that on a public record request, we can on a subpoena.
Okay.
But there's, there's something wrong about that.
Yeah.
So now, but no, on the public record request, any, any labor, we cannot charge.
Okay.
Jeff, along that same line, from time to time, I call the fire department, ask them about Phase One study that someone's buying a business or buying something or a home, and they spend a lot of time looking it up. And maybe they'll never buy anything, but they're, we can't charge for their child.
There was a, there was a state law that was passed through our legislature that allowed twenty dollars per hour for, for labor, to do public records requests, and it was pocket vetoed by the governor. So it, it, there is, it is simply not permissible to charge for labor on any public records request. It is different for subpoenas. So if it, you know, there's an actual lawsuit and a lawyer files a subpoena for all records, you know, that relate to this. At that point, both my fees on the review, the police department or planning department, whatever they have to do in their time, we're allowed to keep and charge reasonable fees for that. Now, keep in mind with public record requests, they can be denied because they're not particulars. If a person says, I want every, piece of every document that Marissa Skaggs ever signed, that one could be denied, you could ask them to narrow it down. So you don't have to go crazy on that kind of stuff. So the, the public record request is supposed to be narrow, it's been targeted toward one record rather than a, what, a fishing expedition. So there are limits on what people could do to try to make the town go crazy chasing things.
Okay, before this happens, I'm going to ask you about it. I get Joe Blow, Eric's good citizen, he comes in, he wants a record of this. It's one page, I'd make you give it to them, I'm not going to charge a taxpayer for one page.
The, I understand that, and we do that. And the, the only thing is, the, the council has passed a resolution that says that we, public record request should be on that form. If, if we, if there are instances where we don't use the form, we'll argue we have to. You can get in a little bit of trouble with the next guy that says, why are you making me fill out? So that's the, Willie, that's almost more important than the, than the money on one pager, I would say. Make sure they fill out.
Right, right.
And a lot of our documents are available online through their own devices. I mean, it would only be things that they would have to go through you to get, that aren't usually already available, either on American Legal or on our database of things that's on our website.
Correct, although we've had one particular, or public records, not as much lately, that insists upon spike the presence of them online as video, that they wanted the actual physical copies, and they're entitled to that.
They're, they're allowed to.
Absolutely, but now, now they would have to at least pay for the physical.
That's true. Any other questions regarding twenty-four twenty-four, schedule of fees for duplication of public records and other services? There aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-four twenty-four, schedule of fees for duplication of records and other services. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Because we get these relatively often, are you comfortable doing a second read on the same night it was introduced? It would require unanimous consent from the council to do so. And I would entertain a motion for a suspension of the rules.
That motion, second.
I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, the rules have now been suspended and we will entertain a motion for approval on the same night it was introduced for second read of ordinance twenty-four twenty-four, schedule of fees for duplication of public records and other services.
Like a motion?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval on second read of ordinance twenty-four twenty-four, schedule of fees of duplication or duplication of public records and other services, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Ordinance twenty-four twenty-five, amending the Access Management and Control Ordinance. This has gone through Planning Commission and received a favorable recommendation, but Denise is here to tell us a little bit more about it.
So before you tonight, for your consideration, we do have a few amendments to our Access Management and Control Ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission. It was a unanimous favorable recommendation that was obtained by that body here this past week. These amendments are outlined in your Google Drive. The proposed changes in detail are highlighted on the side in the comments that have been marked. But basically, the Access Management and Control Ordinance, a very technical document. And, but the, the main goal for this document is to be able to establish, establish regulations for access to properties from public road and public right of way. The standards within the document are for new roads, parking lots, shared access, also cross-access, as well as service roads and even individual driveway cuts. So all with the main intent and purpose to promote safe and convenient travel on the roadways. So since this document was established in twenty twenty-one, we've worked this quite a bit, a lot probably more in the last year than maybe the first couple of years. But we've applied this to all kinds of development, all from site development review to plating and to our improvement location permits for our driveway cuts. In doing so, our planning staff and members of not only our Plan Commission, but also the Board of Zoning Appeals, we've identified some need for clarification on some of the processes and provisions that have been outlined in that document originally, including just some reformatting and some rewording, just to improve understanding and completeness for this document. So beyond just the simple verbiage amendments, some of the more tangible items that you'll see that are being proposed to you for consideration to adopt as an amendment is an inclusion for BCA oversight for any variances. We just wanted to kind of add that as an extra clarification. There is a kind of a waiver piece to that document towards the tail end, but we also wanted to make sure that BCA was pulled in formally and in writing for those variance needs. Also, an inclusion on driveway permits and plating processes, just some of the wording, maybe just mentioned site development here and there. We wanted that to also be thorough and complete picture of what we are expecting. Also approvals for access points involving state highway roads. And then also, we included an exception for residential subdivision as far as the distance, minimum distance between access point and access point. That document outlines that the minimum distance, and it varies between, based on the speed limit of the roadway. However, the minimum distance between driveway to driveway from center point line to center point line is sixty-five feet. Well, looking at our residential subdivisions, new and old, that's very impractical. So we made that as an exception as well. So that is outlined on Table one point one. So we did have some, a couple amendments that they wanted to continue out till next month to have further review and discussion. That's about landscape medians, kind of what we want to have for set standards, and then also one-way driveway cuts. That was another issue that's kind of come up in our developments along the way. But other than that, Plan Commission has recommended approval as presented. And if you have any questions about the document itself or about the amendments, be more than happy to answer them.
Questions for Denise? Okay, then I will, thank you, and I will entertain a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-four twenty-five, amending the Access Management and Control Ordinance. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for twenty-four twenty-five, amending the Access Management and Control Ordinance. Since this has already gone through Planning Commission, this will serve as the second read. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to twenty-four twenty-six, adopting a corridor overlay ordinance, another one that has been through Planning Commission.
Yeah, and I'll just stay up here for a little bit this evening. Yes, so for our next ordinance that we'd like to present, it's the Corridor Overlay District. So this is the first time that we are presenting this to your body. But it has gone through Plan Commission, we've got a presentation that I'll go through here. But after we implemented the UDO back in twenty twenty-one with the tightened standards for development, there has been still some discussion and interest expressed, not only from our board members town leaders, as well as members from our public, to establish an enhanced design and principles and standards for our main corridor. So our main corridors, we consider them kind of our front door to our community, it's our gateway to our community. So that's areas, I sixty-nine on both east and west side, as well as north and south there, State Road thirty-eight and State Street. Also, all the way down to State Road, that's thirteen, but down State Road thirty-eight, as well as then here east of town, we've got the State Road sixty-seven. We've got the US thirty-six and the State Road thirty-eight areas there. So those are areas that are kind of entryways into our community. We have a community that's very full of, rich with history, a lot of historic buildings and structures, homes, as well as a lot of charm. So the intent of this program was to be able to, to enhance and to be able to provide an inviting, welcoming space into our community. Those corridors play a very important role in the impressions, the interactive experience, and also we believe the continued growth of our community. So the corridor overlay standards, they serve as an overlay district to our existing UDO and zoning ordinance. So Plan Commission and Town Staff, we believe with the implementation of these additional standards, it will lend to smart, sustainable growth. So for these reasons and more, on behalf of the Plan Commission, I would like to present this program, this overlay district ordinance, the ordinance is in detail provided in your Google Drive. But we're just going to kind of highlight the key takeaways about this program. There was a favorable recommendation given to your body, so we'll just go ahead and kind of jump right in here. And then after the presentation, I'll show you the map, and the map will kind of help illustrate kind of where all of these overlays apply. So first, you know, why did we fill the need for the corridor overlay? As I just mentioned, it's very important in the role of the town's image and future development for our community. It provides a great realistic and problematic solutions to property owners and businesses as they develop for future development and improvements. And then also, it, it creates that inviting space for streetscape and coordinated designs. This applies to variances, conditional use, plating, rezone requests, as well as site. This applies to, uh, variances, conditional use, plating, rezone requests, as well as site development review. Um, in addition to also improvement location permits that where an existing structure is being added on to more than twenty five percent of its existing structure or square footage. Um, there are five corridors outlined, uh, in that document. It breaks them down, uh, specifically, you know, street by street, which, um, are a part of those corridors. And then overall, it establishes, uh, some higher standards, uh, for architectural standards, development standards, and then also has some land use, um, coverages, uh, as well. I've explained that here a little bit. So the next, uh, what, uh, what process did we take? Uh, we worked with H W C. We worked with, uh, Rachel Christensen, she's a former planning director here for the town of Pendleton. Also Brian and Lanny Stomp, uh, they are, uh, with Civic Blueprint. So they teamed together to work with the town of Pendleton and a steering committee of six members. So between the months of May and here this past, uh, August, they worked on tweaking some of the standards and make sure that it was ready to be presented to plan commission members, uh, you know, for their consideration. So that was presented to them on, uh, September the twelfth. And, um, but prior to that meeting, the steering committee and planning department, we held a informational, uh, session, kind of open house to allow the members from the community to come in and to learn more about the program and to get feedback, uh, that incorporated, that were incorporated into the final draft of this ordinance. So for, uh, this program, uh, the goals mainly are to be community minded. Pedestrian friendly is huge, um, uh, theme throughout this document. Uh, we want to strengthen our street edge, kind of bring those buildings closer to the street. A lot of, let's say even on our highways, we have a seventy foot, uh, setback requirement. It reduces it from a minimum of ten up to forty. Uh, also it encourages human scale with, uh, dimensions and design elements, preservation of our, um, natural character of our land, but then also the character of that corridor. And then, um, also though the areas and the structures that, uh, these standards apply to, they are not applicable to residential properties. It is commercial properties only, uh, residential is exempt. Um, and then some non-residential properties, if they are not visible from that corridor, uh, they do not apply. And as you'll see in the map a little bit later on, basically if you take the interstate area and you go back six hundred feet, that is the area in which, uh, these standards, um, um, are applied to. On a state highway, then, um, it is two hundred feet, uh, off, off the roadway. So the first section is for architectural standards. It is, um, first main section of this, um, document, and it provides suggestions for existing buildings. So this is a little bit different. Um, this is kind of more a phased in approach. So as these applications for improvement location permits, and that'd be building permits, might be site development, uh, remodels, uh, rezones, then we will work with those along with our, uh, design review board. We'll work with those developers to see if we can try to craft it and to be able to meet these recommenda- uh, recommendations as far as enhanced, uh, design, uh, standards and principles. Um, in, in hopes that we can see updates over time, uh, this is not going to be an overnight thing, but with building site layout, including parking, circulation and landscaping for those properties. Um, this is in hopes to encourage a cohesive look within that corridor and, um, kind of match the surrounding area. Also to help foster culture and aesthetically pleasing development for our community. And then also to give guidance, uh, with these standards, uh, for potential improvement for existing commercial, um, buildings within the corridor. Then, uh, moving on to the second section of architectural standards in this document is for new construction. So there's a lot of different elements, uh, that are outlined here. Um, but, um, so for that, the one here listed as an example is a building sighting. That's kind of the building orientation. And when you have a kind of a multi-building, uh, complex, uh, grounds there is kind of how each building kind of talks with each other. It improve, or it promotes, you know, that connectivity, that pedestrian friendly, uh, atmosphere. Uh, also that human scale kind of bringing things down, it's not just one flat wall, has a lot of dimensions in those buildings, including rooftops, canopies, um, and extra features on the exterior for those buildings. Uh, also it requires the rear and side, um, to be utilized for parking, taking it away from the front of that, uh, facade. And then also kind of mentioned, uh, earlier, it speaks about, um, controls of land use within this, uh, zoning area. So basically for, uh, you've got your, your basic zoning, uh, for each parcel that's been assigned. And for that, if there are certain, uh, land uses that have been identified by the committee and plan commission, that they felt that may not be fitting for this corridor. So they either maybe have prohibited it from that corridor, or they have made it to where it's a conditional use that they need to go in front of board zoning appeals to seek, uh, to be able to have that land use there to develop in that, in that manner. So it's just kind of a little added, added layer for that. Um, the other features there are some architectural details and decorative features. They, um, include variety of dimensions, like we were talking about, those rooftops, um, height, width, um, more shallow setbacks, and then even breaks it down with recommendations as far as siding, gutter and textures, um, canopies and, and so forth there on the exterior. And then the next page there, one of the other, uh, components of this program is to, um, to kind of discourage those franchise, uh, architectural standards, uh, creating kind of a unique architectural standard for those franchise, um, uh, establishments. So, uh, for example, you have your Pizza Hut and everyone knows, no matter if Pizza Hut has moved on down the road to a new facility, they know that that was an existing Pizza Hut, at least those in my hair. So, um, so those tend to, when they move out, sometimes sit there and become a blight, uh, property. Um, they become vacant because someone doesn't, it's going to take, uh, too much cost to be able to, you know, craft it to their style, their design and whatnot. So we're trying to prevent that and also too, our goal is to, again, to complement that corridor. So having those, uh, design elements that, um, can be a little bit more, uh, neutral friendly, I guess. Uh, then the last here, additional standards, you'll see here, lighting, signage, uh, fence, wall, parking, landscape, uh, paint colors and materials. So those are outlined in this document. The last thing here, um, is the very tail end of this document. It covers the design review board. It's a three-member panel. Uh, that panel will be comprised of community members, uh, usually for design professionals. We're looking probably for residential subdivision, uh, agent, uh, that has experience, uh, in development as far as for commercial development, um, and then also, um, a mixture maybe of developmental, uh, or, uh, uh, business development, uh, focuses, um, and expertise there for those, uh, panel members. Uh, they will review each time we have a variance, um, I'm kind of lead on the board of zoning appeals. So anytime that we have a variance or a conditional use that comes in front of that board, um, within that corridor, they will be a part of that review process. They will give, uh, staff recommendations that will be presented to that board. Um, also rezone requests, site developments and plattings, they will be a part of that as well. Site development plan is a little bit different. It doesn't really go in front of plan commission. It's, uh, led by staff unless the, uh, plan commission, uh, has, uh, identified that they want to be a part of that process. But with that, um, they will work with our technical review committee, um, to make, um, recommendations and decisions on whether those standards are adequately met. That being said, um, the plan commission has provided a favorable recommendation to your body. Uh, if you decide to adopt that this evening, um, it would just need one read. Uh, the first read was done by plan commission, um, and it will actually go into effect immediately. Uh, there's not a suspense or a law, uh, sign, uh, on the enactment of, of these. If you have any other questions, the only thing I was going to show, if Karen or, uh, Jacob, you could put up this, uh, the map and you'll kind of see here, it's the last segment, yes. The area that you'll see kind of along, uh, the I sixty nine corridor there, you'll see that shaded area, it's kind of the dashed lines over top of the zoning, um, districts there. Uh, you'll see it, um, kind of a, a long here along I sixty nine to the west and goes up thirty eight. You'll see it kind of skip and jump just because of our jurisdictional boundaries there on State Road thirty eight. Then it fits on the east side, um, all the way up to State Road sixty seven along I sixty nine. And then also you'll see it back down here on the south end of, uh, State Road sixty seven, and it hits in that thirty eight, thirty six corridor there.
Thanks Denise.
Kind of a lot, but.
Any questions for Denise regarding this?
Denise, how many months of work again went into this?
Um, I would say the first of the year, uh, started, yeah, kind of knocking out, talking with the consultants on this. And then it started kind of building the spring and then the steering committee was brought in late spring.
And this was really, um, something that planning commission asked for.
Yes, that is correct.
They really wanted this, um, level of guidance for when they are approving new plaits and that sort of thing. And so, um, when the board of experts is asking for another document, we tend to follow suit and get them that document.
That's right.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
If there aren't any further questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty four twenty six, adopting a corridor overlay ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to twenty four twenty seven, amending the U D O. As we say nearly every month, the U D O is a living, breathing document that, uh, the planning commission looks at every month without fail. And so this month, they just brought us two amendments.
Yes, yes, shortlist this month, yes. So yes, that is correct. September the twelfth, there was a few amendments. These two came out, uh, and, uh, were voted on to, um, provide, uh, recommendation, uh, to the town council. So the, uh, they actually both are related to utilities. Um, so the first, uh, amendment, it proposes to add clarification language to our zoning ordinance that requires currently a connection to public water and sanitary sewer utility for any new development. Uh, that is required in all zoning districts except for wreck and open space, ag properties and rural residential. So as some of those areas within our jurisdiction do not have those two utilities currently available, uh, we knew that we needed to address this and somehow. So what this provision gives is that it adds that language to give plan, uh, plan commission some additional authority. Uh, when they decide that they can make an exception to that rule, um, that, uh, kind of that waiver of that requirement to connect in. However, it allows them to not only provide some conditions that they do need to connect in the future, but then it also can give them the opportunity to identify that duration. Um, so let's say that once those public utilities become available, then they are to kind of connect and to tap into it within an X amount of timeframe, um, just based on a case by case scenario. So that is, um, the first part of this first amendment. Uh, the second piece of it is regarding the sanitary sewer piece of it. As we all know, it's Fall Creek Regional, uh, Waste District, um, that controls that utility. And so we just simply wanted to add some clarification language that stated that we just needed approval from them, um, when we go into doing our review processes, when a development comes in. So, uh, that is the, the first, um, uh, the first amendment, uh, that the town, uh, uh, plan commission is proposing. Uh, Mr. Graham, do we want to do this all together or, uh, Madam President, do we want to do them together or do we want to do each separate?
We typically do them together.
Together, okay.
Yeah, because they're approved by planning commission, so we follow there.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, the second amendment, uh, being proposed is that would be to add utility facility to institutional zoning district. So as a town, we are governmental, municipal, uh, uh, you know, operation, and we have water and electric, uh, infrastructure and facilities. So, um, in looking at the U D O, our institutional zoning district actually prohibits currently, uh, utility for, uh, infrastructure or utility facilities. Uh, so in those dis- uh, discussions, um, we are proposing to then add in the allowance of utility, uh, facilities within that zoning district. Uh, as we grow as a municipality, um, I know that there was kind of some talk for water, electric expansions and so forth. We felt that it would be fitting and appropriate and necessary to have that, uh, added in. Uh, there were some discussions as far as does that, uh, encompass, um, wire communication devices and other type of devices, but those are controlled separately within the U D O. So this would just be within a public and private, uh, utility, uh, facility. Those are the two, um, amendments that we're proposing for adoption tonight.
Any questions regarding these amendments, the U D O? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
I have a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty four twenty seven, amending the U D O. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. This is, again, that counts as the second read successfully went through planning commission.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise. Finally, on the agenda, settlement agreement and mutual releases regarding Arbor Homes and Clayton Properties. We believe that the town has reached an out of court settlement and then matter of Arbor Homes slash Clayton Properties versus the town as pertains to the impact fee ordinance. This lawsuit encompasses several factors, one of which was an ambiguity of the law for implementation and whether Arbor Homes should be subject to the impact fee ordinance due to their specific timetable for plating. The ordinance remains intact for all current as well as future projects. At this point, I'll call for a motion for approval of the settlement with Arbor Homes Clayton Properties, followed by a vote.
Get motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the settlement and mutual release regarding Arbor Homes and Clayton Properties. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, any public comments? Anybody on Zoom with any questions, comments, concerns? Anything from anybody up here? Anybody in the audience have anything? Mark?
The only thing I have to say, and I didn't say it earlier, and I said it, you know, here, uh, the budget at the park treasurer's office, just things like the whole lot of work to get a vote passed through. Uh, they, they do a lot of hard work on it and it's very appreciated by the park. It's big deal. I know, facing parents still out there.
Good to hear that.
Anything else?
One item.
Sure.
Should have brought this up for the meeting. Before July of next year, we have to have everything set up for recording all the meetings and everything. Uh, I need, if you would, board members, when we make a motion, whoever makes the first motion, if they would raise your hand so the girls could not bid or it could be not bid or bill in the same way with the second, because sometimes you can't understand who's making it, who's not. We got, we got to clarify that for the record.
We can work on that.
Okay.
It's like the voice, but.
The voice, but different.
Anything else? Okay, with that, at seven oh seven, I'll make a motion, motion for adjournment.
Thanks, everyone.